Hello and welcome to the 2019 City of Riverside City Council Debates. My name is Patricia Locke Dawson and I am the President of the Rain Cross Group. The Rain Cross Group is a group of passionate and involved citizens who work hard to make and keep Riverside an amazing place to live. We need to elect leaders who will be good stewards of our city. This year, we have four seats on the City Council that are up for election. These are the seats that represent Words 1, 3, 5, and 7. And so the Rain Cross Group is proud to co-sponsor the 2019 City Council Debates along with our partners, the PIG Group, Riverside Community College District, the Press Enterprise, and Charter Communications. We hope that these debates will help you make an informed decision. Our moderator for the debate will be Brad Palmerance, television host and producer of KVCR's Uncovered in the Archives. A recording will be available through the Rain Cross Group website. And remember, this June's election is through a mail-in ballot only, so please don't forget to vote before June 4th and stay engaged. Thank you for joining us and please enjoy the debates.
Welcome to the Ward 7 Riverside City Council Debate. My name is Brad Palmerance. I am the host of KVCR's Uncovered in the Archives. It's my honor to moderate this debate on behalf of the Rain Cross Group, the PIG Group, Riverside City College where we are today, Riverside Press Enterprise which will be streaming this debate, as well as Spectrum. And it's my honor as well to introduce you to the five candidates running for Ward 7 whose election will be held starting May 6th in mail ballots and being counted on June 4th. We begin with John Denloffs. He is a retired taxi driver and at-home father. Martin Rousseau. Mr. Rousseau is a small business owner. Steve Hemingway. Steve is an educator and finance director. Thomas Jordan. He is an IT professional. And William Pierce, who is an educator. I will be asking a series of questions. The candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. In my discretion, I may ask for follow-up. There will be no opening or closing statements and I thank the candidates so very much for joining us today. I'd like to, I would also mention that I will go start with Mr. Denloffs and go 1-2-3-4-5, 2-3-4-5-1, 3-4-5-1-2. That's how the debate will proceed. Okay, our first question to all the candidates. Briefly introduce yourself and in two or three questions, explain why you want to serve on the Riverside City Council representing Ward 7 over the next four years. We're going to start with John Denloffs.
Hello. My name is John Denloffs and the reason why I'm running for City Council because I feel that Ward 7 is a forgotten ward. We do not get the correct representation for the people that's in the ward. I'm a single dad, three kids, and I live in, I guess, the eastern side of Ward 7, in the northern part where there's a lot of Hispanics. Most of them can't vote for me because they don't have, you know, they're not legal, but their kids are coming of age where they're 18 years old and I want to inspire them to start thinking about voting, start thinking about taking jobs where they can make a difference in the community and to help their families, their parents, stay here legally. Nobody's going anywhere in this city of Riverside because the state's going to make sure that these folks are here. Most of them own businesses, they own houses, and they need to be kept here. And just so you know, this election is for five years and that's why it's so special. I know what you meant, you said four.
Yes.
I just wanted to state that.
Thank you for that. Mr. Rousseau.
Yeah, my name is Martin Rousseau. We moved to Riverside roughly about 16 years ago. And I've always been involved in the city of Riverside. I belong to the Arlington Business Partners that kind of help the small businesses get more exposure in the community. The famous Chili Cookoff, you know, the Riverside Chili Cookoff we have every single year. I participated in that for a total of nine years and I was a coordinator for that for two years and also I'm currently on the Planning Commission and shared for the last two years. And the reason why I want to run for Ward 7 was I can use all the skills and experience that I've had over the years and put Riverside, the Ward 7, back on the map. I believe that I cannot do this by on my own. I cannot do it with just a few people. I need the whole community of the Ward 7 to step by. And I want to get involved, not just in complaining about what's happening, but actually step up, join the CERT programs and be ready for if a disaster hits, be part of the commissioners, you know, and when we do a walk for Riverside for homeless, participate. So I want to get people involved so instead of sitting complaining, that they actually do something for Riverside. Thank you.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes, I've called Riverside home for over 20 years now. I'm a proud graduate of La Sierra University where I did an undergraduate degree, a master's degree in school counseling, and a master's in business administration with a dual emphasis in accounting and finance. I'm running for City Council because I care about Riverside and I want to see it thrive and prosper. Three key things that I want to focus on are housing and homelessness, building our economy, and making sure our neighborhoods are safe.
Mr. Jordan.
Hi, my name is Tom Jordan. I was born and raised in La Sierra, the ward that I want to represent. I attended grade school there. I attended Notre Dame High School, went to Riverside City College where I was AS president. I participated in some boards and commissions along, boards I should say, along the way. I've had my own business here in Riverside. And my heart is in Riverside. That's the area that, like I said, I grew up in and it's, they're my people, for lack of a better word. My issues that I have with Riverside are, especially in Ward 7, are that the infrastructure needs to be improved, the streets and roads need to be improved, especially in, as John said, in the forgotten areas. There are areas of La Sierra that the new housing tracks, Tiburon, Riverwalk, I'd like the rest of La Sierra to keep pace with that because there are some under-improved areas that really need some attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce.
I'm running for City Council to serve the community that I've been a part of since I was a young man. I attended 1st through 12th grade in Alford Unified School District, La Sierra graduate. I attended this very school that we're sitting in right here that I love so much, RCC, was a launching pad for me to transfer up to UCR where I went and earned my bachelor's and doctoral degrees in history. And, you know, it's just a city I love. I love to live in. I met my wife in the city. We love living here, but there are some quality of life issues that I'm running on. I want the city to be able to serve businesses and residents fully through quality infrastructure and quality services. And I also want to protect the people whose homes lie near a proposed transmission project from that project going above ground and essentially ruining their neighborhoods. And I'd like to see that project undergrounded. Yo también hablo español y creo que los residentes que son hispanos en nuestro área necesitan un representante que hable su idioma. Thank you very much.
I understood that. We appreciate that. I would like to talk about Ward 7 specifically because there was reference to an issue that is on the minds of many Ward 7 residents and that is the attention that's paid to Ward 7. Some believe that City Hall is very downtown-centric and Ward 7 doesn't get the love and attention it deserves. I felt that in your five answers. So I'd like to ask you about that very issue, about how would you as a Ward 7 council member ensure that Ward 7 receives the appropriate love, respect, appreciation, funding that it deserves? We're going to start with our second in the row and that is Mr. Rousseau.
You know, if I can solve that problem one day, it would have been solved by now. I really believe that Ward 7, although to the western part of Riverside, we're not totally by ourselves. And I think if we team up with Ward 6, then we can actually get things accomplished. A lot of things that happen in Ward 6, it's kind of a spill over Ward 7. And I think the second thing that we need to really focus on, yes, downtown Riverside is supposedly the center point for us, but over the last few years, I think efforts has been made for us to actually bring Ward 7 and Ward 6 pretty much back on the map. So by us having a satellite office, let's say we take the city, have a satellite office, move the satellite office to that part of Ward 7, and have a representative from Riverside itself walk the area, see the people, talk to people, I think that'll make people realize that Ward 7 potentially can really put Riverside back on the map and make it for a very, very strong addition to Riverside itself.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yeah, I think the key there is advocating, right? We just need to strongly advocate to get our share over on Ward 7. Yeah, I'd like to see maybe a destination space there. I clearly have a bias toward La Sierra University, but I think we could find ways to let everyone know that Ward 7 is a place that you can go and enjoy and find meaningful time as well. I think that, I've also spent some time with the city manager to say, is there a way we can find out what things are happening in each ward so that we can make sure we're looking at everything and evaluating and seeing on paper, are we getting our fair share and what can we do about making sure that that happens? So I'll continue to strongly advocate for Ward 7.
Mr. Jordan.
Well, what we're talking about now is Ward 7 and so the issues for Riverside are a separate deal. We need someone that's going to advocate, that's going to basically be the squeaky wheel because the squeaky wheel is the one that gets the grease. And I don't think we've had enough squeak in our past representation. All you have to do is simply walk the ward and you'll see that there's been a neglect that's occurred for not just two years or three years, it's happened for 30 years. There are streets that have never received any attention. And the attention they have received, in one street off Bushnell, they recently put in sidewalks and they put them in too low. The street is higher than the sidewalks.
So what would you do as a councilman to fix that?
Well, I would be talking to the contractor and I'd be talking to the inspector, definitely.
But more broadly?
More broadly?
To make sure that Ward 7 gets the attention you believe it deserves.
Well, at every City Council meeting, I would be bringing up the issues of Ward 7. I would be proposing the different agenda that needs to be accomplished and I'd see that it was voted on in council. I would definitely not rest until those action items were completed and at least addressed.
Mr. Pierce.
Like Mr. Rousseau said, we need to partner up. You know, I can't just do this on my own as a representative of Ward 7. And Jim Perry is a very strong councilman of Ward 6 and he has in the past advocated for the west side, not just for his own ward, but also for Ward 7. And I would want to strengthen that partnership. I would want that area, the entire west side, not just 7 and 6, but also where 5 is as well to sort of, you know, be it strengthen our bonds and our partnerships and work together. A lot of those streets cross each other and you can be driving down the bumpy road in Ward 7 and it's the same bumpy road in Ward 6. And, you know, action items, they have to be done. There has to be follow-up from the councilmen that I would be very happy to do, constantly, you know, poking and prodding and saying, when is it getting done? When is it getting done? We have people here, they want it done. They've been asking me, when I've been out knocking doors, when are we going to see these projects finished? Why isn't this giant pothole that people have lost tires and shocks on getting fixed? You know, better communication as well would also be key, making sure that residents are receiving those communications in English and in Espanol.
Mr. Denloffs.
Great question. Wonderful question. And the answer is real simple. We've already started it. I think every time Martin talks, I come up with an idea. He's already said that when he's councilman, he's going to make all of us do the walk, join board members, members on boards. And so we've already done that because what we've done here is we've also created something on the 9th of May to bring all the other councilman candidates over to, it's technically Ward 6, but over to the northwestern side of Riverside to show them that, hey, you know what? Whoever's getting in, they're going to have an entourage of ex-candidate councilmen that's going to back them up. So we're already standing strong and that's what has to happen here in Ward 7. Everybody that's been complaining is going to be able to come to each or any one of us and it's going to have results. So what are we doing? We're going to make sure that just by chance I don't win, I will be creating a community group. What I heard is that there's going to be every other Tuesday or council meeting, they're going to be voting on that soon.
We'll talk about that soon.
Okay. And so what it is, is on those weeks that we don't work on at downtown, we'll be working on Ward 7. Thank you.
Many of you brought up the alliance between Ward 6 and 7 and I want to ask you about this. As you surely know, the city has mandated a housing plan and much of an area that's been rezoned for high-density housing, much of that area is placed in Wards 6 and 7 at some level to the dissension of many residents of Ward 6 and 7. What will you do as council number four, Ward 7, to, if you believe this, restrain that growth, assuming that that's what you're hearing from your constituents? I'd like to start with Mr. Hemingway.
Yeah, well, first and foremost, our job is to represent the constituents of our ward. So I think open communication and dialogue to find out what those, what our community members want is important. That being said, yeah, strengthening our partnerships to make sure that we're working well with the surrounding wards. I'm happy to say, Councilman Perry and I have had a lot of conversations and I've been endorsed by Councilman Perry as well. And we need to address this housing challenge. And if the zoning and the code works, then perhaps we need to look at the spaces where we can put the proper housing, the housing necessary to meet the units needed that are state requirements. We have to get 4,700, more than 4,700, almost 4,800 more housing units in our city by 2021 or we start getting penalties. We have to address this. It's also contributing to our homelessness challenge. But again, I think that has to happen with relationship and dialogue with the community to make sure it's the right fit for the right space as we move forward to address this challenge. And I look forward to facilitating those conversations.
Mr. Jordan.
I'm not sure what penalties those would actually be. I've heard of penalties and I've heard of the state of California imposing these, but the truth of the matter is, I invested in a home that I planned on living in and retiring in and I did so at a time the zoning was at a certain level, a single-family residence. Now, years later, they come and they want to tell me that I have to rezone or that they're going to put an apartment complex in. You know, I don't think that is really fair to the people that have invested in the area, who are long-term residents of the area. And they really, we have little concern over the migration habits of the rest of the world. This is La Sierra, this is our town and this is where we put our roots and we've invested in it. And our home prices have gone up, that's a good thing. Okay? I mean, many of us feel that's to be desired. So I'm all for maintaining that the zoning that historically has been there. There are plenty of other areas that can be developed and I think La Sierra, Ward 7 for example, has had more development than most in the past 30 years. In fact, there's no doubt about it. We have, we've had Riverwalk and all around the university. There's places for infill that can be used to regentify the city and other than that, I'd be opposed to any, you know, scale of growth.
High-density growth?
High-density growth.
Is, do you, do we have a choice?
Of course we have a choice. We always have a choice. The state of California and Governor Newsom, I mean, they're not the ones that dictate how my quality of life is going to be. You know, it's Ward 7 that dictates what it's going to be.
But those 4,700 units are high-density, which Mr. Hemingway mentioned.
Well, if anybody can tell me what the penalties are, I'd like to hear what they are.
We'll try to find out. Mr. Pierce.
Well, I am also against the re-zoning of certain areas for high-density housing. I don't think that's good for a community that already has traffic so bad that sometimes to drive out of a parking lot from the LA Fitness where I work out takes me 10 minutes. That's ridiculous. I'm trying to go, you know, 100 feet. So there's plenty, there's, our area is, you know, almost full. So that's just for me a non-starter. We need to work to lobby with some of our state representatives to find out, you know, what does this really mean for our city? And is there a way for our city to put these properties or to scale it back or to possibly even mitigate whatever the penalties are going to be, the consequences that Governor Newsom decides he's going to pronounce on the rest of us are going to be? I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair that the state should be telling every single community how they are going to live.
Well, what should we do about the state's housing crisis? It's undeniable.
Yeah.
Democrat, Republican, everyone agrees, we're not building enough homes.
Right. For one, when we do build homes, they can't be like some of the properties that have been developed where you have thousands of cars spilling out into the streets because they didn't even put enough parking to begin with. So, you know, you can build more homes, sure, but it has to be done in a way that doesn't look just at a basic EIR, but also at the broader impact on the community.
Okay. Mr. Denloffs.
Great question. Very, it should be more than 90 seconds for me to answer, but I'll do it.
Apologize.
It's quite all right. I've checked it out with the homeless buildings that the city's already recommending. Great location, here are buses. I don't want Ward 7 to look like downtown where they have businesses and then they have these apartments on top. I am totally against any businesses with these apartments because I feel like they'll be taken away from the current businesses that there is now, but I'm totally supportive of high-density because I am on Section 8. And what's wrong with Section 8 is this, we have the federal money, we have the vouchers, we need housing to put these people in.
But in terms of high-density, Mr. Pierce mentions parking. I don't have specific knowledge of the 4,700 units coming online, but is there sufficient parking for high-density in Ward 7 as we discuss it today?
The thing is parking is we need to start educating people to use public transportation. If we get a nice $25, $30 an hour job in LA, all you have to do is catch the bus, go down to the train and go straight out there, you know? So bottom line is, we can make that happen, but what has to happen here is that we have to keep Ward 7. We have the horses. We want to keep the horses. All right? We're connected to Norco. It's, Ward 7 is the best place around. And so we don't want Ward 7 to turn into downtown Riverside.
Mr. Hemingway, do you have an answer to the density question?
Well, I would just clarify the parking piece. Our code and the zoning would require any development to have the proper parking. So as long as those parking meet the specified requirements, it's a little bit challenging to sort of push too much on it. Now, again, we can ask the community, does this seem viable? And make sure that we're enforcing all the rules necessary to make sure that we're not inundating our streets with unnecessary traffic.
Mr. Pierce. Just on the parking question. I need to get back to Mr. Rousseau.
I will get back to you.
So just on the parking issue, that is, has become a real problem and not just for Ward 7, but throughout certain areas of the city. It's, it's dangerous. It's actually a real danger if you have people going down a street and there are, you know, hundreds and hundreds of cars lined up, families trying to cross in places where they're not there.
I need to get to Mr. Rousseau.
I know, but just on the parking, the high-density is to get this homeless folks off the street.
We'll talk about homelessness.
And they don't have cars, so we don't have to worry about parking.
We'll talk about that in a second. Mr. Rousseau.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. You know, being on the Planning Commission for the last seven and a half years, we went through the re-zoning of Riverside and the requirements that the state forces on us. And unfortunately, the penalty is not physical penalty, it doesn't allow us to develop and expand Riverside the way we're supposed to. So, you know what? We have to abide by it. We have to follow the rules. So what we've been done at the Planning Commission is anytime a project comes in front of us, we try and negate it so that we can actually have not just enough parking, but enough area, open space for the people. So if somebody, a developer comes in with an X amount of units and we felt that units are too oversaturated, we'll ask for a reduction in units, which we've done on La Sierra and Indiana. So by doing it, we can actually make the housing available to people. We have to buy it, buy it, otherwise it's going to Riverside and alongside. And the bottom line is, people need housing. They need affordable housing and they need, so we are, in other words, we were handed this bad apple and now we just have to make some apple pie out of it.
Okay.
And I do believe that we have a really awesome resource with the Planning Commission and if you guys ever watch some of the videos and the events that happen, they actually go through the homework and same with the city planners, they actually go the extra mile to make Riverside viable for the people to live there.
I want to talk about homelessness, if I may. Let's talk about this purported crisis that we have. What we know is in 2017, in the point in time count, Riverside had under 400 people. Some would say that was a drop from prior years. We recently had a count. We don't know what the results will be, but what we do know is that homelessness is a significant issue to the voters of Riverside, which has reached out to churches and community groups and even created a new Office of Homeless Solutions. So my question to the candidates is, should the city offer more shelters and services or would more support, encourage more homelessness? How should the city approach this challenge? And try to be as specific as possible. We're going to start with Mr. Jordan.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think the city has joined with the idea that Housing First Initiative is a good way to go. And there are some components of that that I totally agree with. The only problem with that is that there needs to be housing first. So there's not enough developed housing for the homeless population for them to get started in. So the idea of, you know, not having a transitional shelter, I don't think that jives. We need transitional shelters and they can't just be downtown because the homeless population is not mobile. I know that in La Sierra, and let's speak to Ward 7, has encountered a lot of code enforcement, police activity, homeless outreach, and it goes, they go around in a caravan, but they, I don't know, I haven't seen a single person, I haven't heard of a single person from Ward 7 out of the 40 or 50 that I know that are there that have actually engaged in the Housing First Project. I don't know anybody that's been helped. So what we need to do is we need to have a transitional shelter, perhaps in the way of mobile units that are constructed off La Sierra Boulevard, not Main Street, but, you know, subdued a little bit. And I think that would help go a long way. Then they'd be in a place that we could actually furnish services to them. They'd be centralized and...
Mr. Pierce.
Yes, it is a serious issue, but it, there's no like one magic solution. Working with faith groups is definitely one of the solutions, you know, to help a certain number of people, transitional housing, permanent housing, there's, there are a lot of things to do. But the fact is, many people will refuse service due to whatever their personal issues are, whether they be with their mental health or other just personal problems that they have, they refuse service. And I've met with several people in the Homeless Solutions, with the Office of Homeless Solutions, and they say their number one problem is they can't even get them to come in to get the help that they need. And so I think what we need to do is something that cities in Orange Counties have done, in Orange County have done, and that is put pressure on them to get the help that they need by showing up with stronger code enforcement, citing people when they actually are violating laws and not just saying, well, we feel bad that you're homeless, so we'll just let you go because it's not, it's not worth our time.
But is that legal or viable? I mean, we know that the Ninth Circuit recently ruled that those types of aggressive enforcement tactics can be...
And I don't think it needs to be done, you know, in like mean or cruelly. It can be done with dignity and respect, you know? Where you say, you can saw it, you know, when the police show up, you can say, hey, look, we have people here from the Office of Homeless Solutions, we can have them come to help you right now so you don't have to be in this situation.
Would you support having a social worker, a psychologist, join police officers in these events?
Yes.
We need to get to the others and then I'll get back to you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Denloffs.
Yes, another not 90-second question. But Martha McLean Park is adjacent to the riverbed. Ideal park to allow people with homeless vehicles and stuff to park at night without being harassed. When you drive by on Harupa, guess what? You can't see them. You can't see anybody. There's no playground in that area. All we have to do is put in a shower facility, give them people an opportunity to shower. We transition the park into like a campsite. The thing is, the state of California says, if you do not give homeless people options, you can't tell them what to do. you, you can't tell them what to do.
But do you think your, the Ward Seven residents would support transitioning a park into a campsite?
This is actually Ward Three, Ward Seven, Ward Three adjacent together, but they, they will, because there's a lot of compassionate people who like to feed the, the homeless. Well, the homeless are scattered everywhere. So, if they all consolidate in one area, the, the folks that don't want people helping the homeless can mind their own business, the people that do want to help will know where the homeless folks are, and then also the homeless solution will be able to take an opportunity, uh, and, and show up and, and help these folks. Hulan Place is downtown, everything's downtown. We have a big city, this town is no longer a town, it's a city. And the police officers pick up a homeless person, they have to drive all the way on the other side of town. We need to start making different sites. And the best site is Martha McLean, is right along the riverbed, you know? So, that's one of my suggestions.
Mr. Rousseau?
You know, we took the liberty this year of actually doing the count, the homeless count, so we actually counted twenty-three people, we were a team of three. And I can tell you this much, most of the people we encountered, you're absolutely right, did not have any desire to get any help. We had one person out of twenty-three was a vet, he was, he was just using meth and thiamine slightly, but anyways, we got him some help, but the rest of the people didn't care about it. But the biggest problem that we're forgetting is that the homeless people is not grouped into one group, but inside that group, there are actually people that has mental, has some mental disorders, which we need to take care of. Then there's people that's homeless because of circumstances beyond their control, yes, and those are people we can actually take and rehabilitate them, and put them in housing, and actually help them become responsible citizens for the, the city of Riverside. And the third element is the criminal element. When these people get left out of jails and they come to our cities and invade our cities, those people don't give a hoot about, they do, they commit crimes, they rob people, they steal from people, they break into homes, those are the elements we need to get rid of. If we get rid of them, then the rest of the homeless people is much easier to handle.
What does that mean, "get rid of"?
You know what? We need to go to the cities where they get released from San Bernardino and say, "Hey, you know what? Do not release these people and bus them over to our area."
Are they doing that? Are we seeing releases from San Bernardino?
Well, you know what, nobody ever admit to it, but it's, it's, all of a sudden you see an influx of people getting released from jails, and the next thing you know, Riverside gets a little fair share of their, the homeless individuals, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Hemingway?
Sir, can I ask a question? Do we get additional time when you do a follow-up question?
Possibly.
Okay.
When I can, it's, it's a crowded panel, I'll do my best.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Hemingway?
Sure, yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, we certainly have to address our housing, uh, homeless challenge. Um, and I don't think, yeah, it's one, one fix, we're going to have to look at multiple things. I think the city's made great strides forward, um, by implementing the Housing First. Um, we, we just need more units, I believe, that will offer permanent supportive housing. Um, again, a lot of these individuals, when we're talking about how we address, um, and interact with them, um, it's, it's, it's pretty common knowledge that it takes multiple engagements to gain trust. So, to, to the notion that most reject this help, um, it depends on the circumstance. If a law enforcement person is engaging with someone like that, then, yeah, there may be some resistance, so, but it, but we do know it takes multiple engagements to get them to receptive, uh, help, be receptive to help. I think the idea of social workers and mental health professionals is, is going to get us, um, you know, closer. We implemented the Social Work Internship Program recently, we piloted that at La Sierra University Church, that allows us to outreach to folks in a different context, and we've had good results with that. Um, I think we can do more by partnering with our universities to utilize professionals that are going to go into certain areas, um, that can help solve this as well. Um, but I do think that it's going to take educating the community on the realities of homelessness, and figuring out the most effective way forward, um, using multiple methods.
One way to combat homelessness is to increase the number of jobs that are available. Uh, if someone has a job, they're likely going to be able to find a home. So, my question is, what specific steps would you take to help diversify the local economy and nurture higher-wage job growth in the city of Riverside? I'm going to start with Mr. Pierce.
Well, one of our, one of the strongest ways, I think, that we'll be able to diversify the economy is by, you know, allowing, uh, businesses, or providing, assuming not allowing, providing partnering opportunities with our local universities and our local schools. Uh, recently, it was announced that Al-Ward Unified Schools would be partnering with, uh, some of the city departments for internships, for jobs that are high-paying jobs, for example, mechanic jobs. I mean, people sometimes, you know, they look at, say, "Ah, we, they all need to go to college, everyone needs college." There's, most great jobs really don't require a college education, what they require is an opportunity to learn and get experience in that field.
It's a trade.
Yeah, and in, in the trade, in all these trades, we have, you know, RCC, CBU, UCR, La Sierra University, and I think if we could reach out to the business community and show businesses that we have an educated workforce, we have a skilled workforce here in the city, you don't need to go pay high rents in Orange County, in L.A., to, you have your, the workforce that you need to run your business. We have lower rents here, we have less expensive electricity and water, and we have the people who can meet your business needs.
I, I would mention that, uh, we, the six of us have makeup on right now, we're on television, and the makeup artists are Riverside Community College, uh, students, uh, in a trade program, and they did an outstanding job. So, I hear you loud and clear. As you answer this question, let's broaden it out, as Mr. Pierce did, how can we partner with the education communities? RCC, La Sierra, CBU, um, UCR, in terms of job growth and job development? You did a great job answering it, you brought me to my next question, so we're going to have two in one. Let's go to Mr. Denloffs.
All right. First thing is, get ready for this, I know at RCC, and I got thirty semester hours here, I love this school, I consider myself an alumni, all right? But, uh, and, uh, I just wanted to tell you this, you don't need to go to college to make lots of money. Today is April twentieth, and Riverside, uh, County is, Sheriff's Department is having, you know, interviews to get a job. Eighteen years old, you can be a correction officer, making tons of money, and then while you're being on corrections, you'll have a set hours and time, you can sign up for RCC and have, uh, semester hours. And in about two, three years, after you've been in corrections for a while, you might be able to, uh, expand that to a bachelor's degree. All done right here in the city of Riverside without acquiring a major, uh, bill. Plus, also, RCC, or, um, the county will eventually give you money to go to college, right? But here's the other thing, uh, Albert School District is charting up a mechanics program. I go take my brand-new car and they just put parts in. What we need to do is have these kids do electrical, we need them do plumbing. These are union jobs, acquiring overtime for five years into it, they get a nice check so they can afford a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house. So, guess what, folks? Instead of telling your kids, "Grow up, get a college degree, go get a county job." Wish I had done that thirty, forty years ago, probably wouldn't be running for city council right now.
There are many paths indeed, Mr. Rousseau.
You, you know what? I believe that Riverside is actually very, very blessed with all the colleges we have, universities we have. Some of the developments we, we're talking about is developing like a new medical facility up for the two fifteen, uh, two fifteen years. And in order for us to do that, I really believe that we need to instill the value inside the students to say, "Listen, you know what? We need to have you stay in Riverside and work in Riverside, or do internship in Riverside." And I, I like, uh, uh, programs where there's internships. I remember some of my clients, when I talked to them, they frustrated because these people go to co, to school, they come out of trade school, they've never picked up a shovel in their whole life, and they can't even dig a hole. So, guess what? They're not even viable as, as, as interns. Now, with the internship, you get your hands dirty, and by the time you leave that, that facility, you are actually viable for the person that can hire you. And I do believe we need manufacturing jobs, you know, being warehousing, warehousing looks pretty, but they don't do much for anybody else, everything's automated, we need some, some jobs where, because people make things and do things, and people can move up to the, from the, the, the bottom of the floor and to the management position. And that way, if we do that, we'll actually draw some people and keep some of the people in Riverside, yeah.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, increasing our college and career pathways is, is certainly , uh, necessary. Um, and again, yeah, the internship programs. When I was at the Chamber, we were looking into how to, uh, increase that, that relationship between our colleges and universities to, um, have more internship opportunities. When businesses know that, that there are students, very skilled and trained, qualified students that will be out in the workforce, and they are working in their space, not only does that help those students learn what's going on in Riverside, be a part of solutions here, but also they're rubbing shoulders with the businesses that maybe, hopefully, they'll stay and work here. But the challenge, again, I think, is how do we keep those students here? Some may be living here, but they're driving to a place that, uh, is going to pay more. So, we have to attract the businesses that are going to sustain and pay the right amounts for those, uh, for the best and the brightest among us. Um, so, I, I think that's important. And I think also getting collaboration between the universities. With our Social Work Internship Program, we actually have Cal Baptist, La Sierra, and La Melinda all partnering together. I think we can expand that when it comes to our internships. I think, I know Uni, U, uh, UCR and LSU have innovation labs in their, in their universities. Um, and we have an innovation district that we're exploring here in Riverside. Can we partner together and think, and lean into our, our motto of, of a place of arts and innovation, and become the leaders in innovation here in Riverside, and make sure that those jobs stay here, and those students stay here, they start families here, and then the cycle begins again?
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. Well, you mentioned homeless as far as being part of the target audience for, for jobs, um, and I've heard some talk about the, uh, vocations being, uh, uh, one of the targets. In La Sierra, there's a medical college that is impacted, uh, they're, they're learning to be paramedics and, uh, CNAs. In downtown Riverside off Iowa, there is a computer school which is impacted, Computer Training Academy. There is also, uh, there's one other on the tip of my tongue, um, there's another vocational college, I can't remember what I was going to say, but anyways, vocations. Now, I'd be, I'd be definitely agreeable to zoning some land for a vocational hub, um, maybe, uh, a, a campus-like with different vocations being served, uh, at one time in La Sierra. I think that would be a perfect place for it. I think we need to focus on that. La Sierra, the universities, Cal Baptist are all doing great. Um, RCC might, might be well-suited for developing their vocational schools. Uh, but I think that's, that's definitely a place to start.
I want to ask a yes or no question, simply answer yes or no. If you were on the city council today, would you vote in favor of the proposal to cut the number of council meetings from four a month to two a month every other week instead of every week? Yes or no? Uh, Mr. Denloffs?
Yes.
Mr. Rousseau?
No.
Mr. Hemingway?
No.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Thank you. Let's move on to a very important issue, and that is pensions. As you surely know, the city of Riverside is facing over five-hundred-and-sixty million dollars of unfunded liabilities. It is a tsunami that is facing our city. How specifically would you pay for these rising pension costs? What services would you advocate, if any, to trim or cut outright to cover required spending on retirees? Please be as specific as possible. I believe we are now starting with Mr. Denloffs.
Um, I don't believe I can answer that question until I am a councilman, and I've got all the facts in front of me. Uh, it would be really great for me to just spat out some numbers and stuff, but I, I always like to answer those kind of questions with research and facts.
Fair enough. Mr. Rousseau?
You know, well, I'm not going to be as, as close-minded as that, anyway. You know what, the, the problem with the pension plans, you know, it's never going to go away. If Riverside decides to get out of the pension plans and, "Listen, we're not doing this anymore," it's going to cost them four billion dollars, and that's not going to happen either. So, you know what? Unfortunately, this is not an easy solution, it's not something we're going to fix in the next three or four years. But we can start by doing golden handshakes, you know, some of the people's been there for a long time, and see if we can retire their people. And this way, we could actually have the new people coming in, not be as aggressive in the Cal PERS program, and maybe have a different way of, of accumulating money for their retirement. So, this is going to take a few years, and it's going to take making some really, really hard decisions. And the problem is, when you start cutting services, then you get some disgruntled people. But at the same time, we need to review all those services, and we make, make, make sure that those services is in line with what the people need, and what the people can actually use on a regular basis, and not go to waste. I do believe there's a lot of fraud that goes on too, and we need to make sure we curtail that. And I think by doing all those things combined, we can make a dent in solving the problem for the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yeah. Um, well, I do think that, I, I know there are things being done already by the city, and, um, I, I know they're exploring the Fresh Start, uh, program, which takes the volatility spikes out of the payment schedule. Um, I think there are other options as well, um, making additional discretionary payments on our principal. Um, you can save money, just like we would when you're paying your home mortgage, you, if you can pay extra toward the principal, you save money, um, on interest over the long run. Um, but I do think, um, there are some options ahead. We didn't get here overnight, we're not going to solve this, um, overnight, it's going to take some time to work through it. Um, I'm optimistic of how we can solve it, um, but I do think we also need to maintain our promises that we've made to our, our employees.
Mr. Jordan?
Well, you know, what is driving these cost increases? Uh, you know, is it just bad assumptions on our investments? I don't think we can use the bad luck defense on this. Um, I think what we need to do is really establish an investment policy and, and have a competent board that oversees, uh, you know, the, the, the policies that we have in place already. Um, we need better information systems, information systems that are real-time reporting, that are triggered by key factors, that, an integrated system that basically gives us, uh, the, the knowledge that we need to govern properly.
Mr. Pierce?
Well, my wife's a teacher, and so, for almost eleven years now, I've also been following Cal-PERS closely, because that's her thing. And it's, basically, Cal-PERS and Cal-PERS have sort of followed the same path. It's, it's, it's the same problem, huge, unfunded liabilities. Uh, the difference is that we, as a city, are unlike the state which can, and has shown that it is not afraid to tax us as much as it wants to pay for anything that it wants to pay for. Uh, that's going to be a hard swallow for residents here. And residents here, they don't, they don't deserve to have services cut. But, you know, the city has already looked at, and the city councils has already been given about fourteen different options, uh, to, fourteen different ways to try and restructure debt, pay down debt early, pay down debt faster, uh, the Cal-PERS Fresh Start Program. Uh, there are things that city can do, like liquidating assets that are costing the city money, uh, to possibly get ahead on some of those payments. Uh, there's no one magic fix for this, but, you know, starting, taking a really hard look at every single department and saying, "Where is our money actually going? And is it being spent in the best way possible so that we're not losing opportunities to pay down our debts and get ahead of our pension program?" These are all things that can be, and should be done.
Mr. Pierce brought up the question of taxes, and I want to mention Measure Z. As you know, the voters of Riverside were very generous a few years ago in passing Measure Z. And I want to ask our candidates from Ward Seven, how well do you believe the city has done in keeping its commitment to the voters about how the city would spend the tens of millions of dollars in annual tax receipts from that Measure Z? Would you spend the tax proceeds differently? Would you, would you have spent it differently? And if so, how? I believe we're starting with Mr. Rousseau.
I think so far, the city's actually done a fairly good job. I mean, we got the fire truck engines, we've got some new police officers, some new staff members and firefighters. So, I think they've done a pretty good job, uh, you know, but if you actually look through the numbers more like very closely, more likely find some discrepancies that they could have made some adjustments to. But I think the way the, the budget is spent, that should be reviewed on an annual basis, or at least a bi-annual basis, and the reason why is because things changes all the time. So, they earmark money there for homeless, they earmark money for all the other projects, for street, uh, paving the streets and stuff, but I think that needs to be reviewed on a regular, a regular basis. And also, what I would recommend is that we have an outside panel, not just a panel from the, the Riverside itself, but from each ward, one or two representatives, like a commissioner, so they can sit down and actually collectively sit down and keep everybody accountable. accountable. The more people there are, the more people can be held accountable, and we need to keep their toes to the fire.
Okay, Mr. Hemmenway?
I, I believe that it's been spent fairly well. Um, and I think moving forward, we just need to make sure that, uh, there's proper oversight and it's spent on the things that the taxpayers agreed that it would be spent on.
Uh, Mr. Jordan?
Which I'm not sure if that included Cal Pers initially.
Uh, what Mr. Jordan's referencing is there was a payment made, $24 million, I understand, for pensions, pension, buying down pension debt. Feel free to expand.
Thank you. Uh, but I do agree that the, uh, the city's services have been expanded, they've, uh, increased fire protection and, uh, and there's a lot slated for the police department, uh, coming up. So the homeless programs, a lot has been earmarked, as they said. Uh, you know, unless you're actually in the mix and in the, uh, process of working with the budget, it's, uh, you know, it's hard to really, uh, defend or, or justify things that you're not hands-on with. So I, I would have to defer, you know, my full remarks until then.
Okay.
And if I could just make a clarification, uh, of that 24 million, not all of it went to pension liabilities. Uh, 19% or something went to general funds, some went to liabilities, but yeah, a portion did go to the...
Did you feel that was a, an appropriate use of funding for, from Measure Z?
It, it seemed appropriate. Um, again, we do have to get at some of our debts because debts cost us over the long run.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, feel free to answer that and the general question.
Yeah, it definitely, getting ahead of, you know, paying down debts is very important. Uh, you know, you, you don't want to get, debts is, it's like one of those things where it seems like what you're buying at the time is a good idea, and then as a city, 20, 30 years later, you're still paying for something, and then you're wondering, why are we still paying for this? Uh, it can, it can make a project that could cost, uh, you know, maybe $100 million initially, could end up costing $350 million by the end. So that is, I don't like saying that that, those funds should be used for that, but if the money is there, then it probably should be.
What about other spending on Measures Z?
Right, and the other funding, and now this was billed as something that was going to help emergency services here in the city, and that should, it can, it should continue to be used for that. Uh, emergency services are critical. Uh, you know, we don't wanna have a situation where, you know, there's, we can't get a police or fireman out to an emergency, uh, because, you know, they don't have the right equipment, or there just aren't enough people on the job. And it, we should never put residents in that situation.
Finally, we'd like to ask that same question, Mr. Denlofs.
Well, I would rather have spent more money on the police department. I think the fire department needs to have a little bit smaller toys to play with, because every time I see them getting dispatched to pick up somebody that's need help, a homeless person, they got these big trucks, all they need is, we need to hire more firemen, smaller units, that way, because that's basically most of the calls they're having right now. Down there in Tyler and Arlington, somebody's overdosing, we don't need a big vehicle. What we do need is that, since the police department can only cite and release homeless people, we need more surveillance, we need more officers, especially on traffic. Out here in La Sierra, the kids seem to think that 70 miles per hour is appropriate. We need to double the traffic police officers from night and day, not just, because almost everybody, the police officers are in certain areas where they know they can get people to pay their tickets, right? Well, I would like the police officers in areas where we just like to get the criminals off the street and confiscate their car when they're going 25, 30 miles over the speed limit in this area.
Civil forfeiture?
Whatever it takes. Right now, what I found out is people that has no, uh, registration on their car, they can only cite and release them, you know? So, uh, I just like to spend more money on the police department than the fire department.
Okay. This is our final question of our conversation today, and of course, each of the five candidates will have every opportunity to respond. Uh, by many, any measure, Riverside is a good place to live, a crown jewel in the inland empire. What specifically would you do to help Riverside make the leap from a good city to a great city? Are warehouse or construction jobs enough to push the area to the next level? Or does the city need something else? Give us your big picture or be as specific as you'd like. We're gonna start with, I think it's Mr. Hemmenway, is that right?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I, I do believe Riverside is a great space to live, um, work and play. Um, and I think that we need to sell that story and that, that vision and, uh, that reality to those around us, um, and entice businesses that will come here and pay good, high-paying jobs for our, um, college graduates. We need to, um, work hard to make sure those graduates then, uh, stay here, work here. Um, I think we also can look at leaning into our, our, our motto of innovation and arts, and we've done a great job of doing that, and we need to keep doing that. Um, I think the Cheech is a great addition to that. I think, um, our innovation district will be a great, um, addition to that. But I do think in order to get there, we have to address some, some really important things, and that is address our housing, um, challenge and make sure that there's affordable, attainable housing for those students that will stay, for folks on all, on the continuum that need a smaller, more affordable space. Um, I think we also need to, um, make sure that we're strong financially, and I also need to, I, I think we need to make sure that we're focused on, um, thriving neighborhoods and making sure our infrastructure is in place. I think that will move us from where we wanna be, um, and we can even accentuate our story more and attract more folks to be a part of this great place.
Mr. Jordan?
You know, there's always a time for, uh, new ideas and innovations, and, uh, certainly I would welcome those, but sometimes it's time to regroup and just to, uh, to embody what you have and strengthen the things that you do have in place. We have a lot of programs that, uh, that we put in place that we just need to give some time to and, and see them, um, grow stronger.
Mr. Pierce?
You mentioned warehouses specifically.
I did.
And that has been sort of a growing trend out here in the inland empire, it's not a Riverside-specific thing. Cities have fell in love with warehouses for a while, but like you've said earlier, what we've seen, and some of the other councilmen mentioned, or candidates mentioned it, what we've seen is that warehouses, they don't really improve the community, uh, overall in the way that many cities hope they would. And I would hope that we could be much more aggressive in lobbying and reaching out to other industries besides the warehousing and logistics industry, uh, specifically through the, you know, hopefully the chamber can help a lot in this. We have a lot more to offer than just a big warehouse space. The city of Riverside is much more than that. And, and people, if we reach out and show them that it is more than that, we can really help them. And another thing we need to do is, you know, make sure that we keep the city safe and financially viable and, and thriving, uh, so that businesses don't come here and then see a city that's, you know, on a downward trend and run out like they did on San Bernardino. I, I, I don't want that for our city. I want our city to stay strong and healthy.
Mr. Denlofs?
I'm not into any more warehouses for the city of Riverside. They're ugly, ugly sites. Uh, what we should be doing is start saving these big, massive, open space for our sports complex. We shouldn't have to go to LA for our good sports, and we don't need the Raiders or anybody to come here. We need somebody really good like the Cowboys, you know? Something like that.
Fighting words.
We, we also need, we also need to vote for the right people, people that is compassionate and passionate for our position to make sure certain things stay the way it is. Like in Ward Seven, we wanna keep our horses. We wanna keep the northern part of Ward Seven country, no buildings, no, no housing, we're not gonna, we're not gonna tolerate that. And who, who, who would I say you should vote for? I'm kinda greedy. I thought I'd make a great councilman, and he'll be my planning commission, right? But I find out, his term is over next year, so it's not gonna work out for my plan. So maybe, maybe the, the best thing to do is maybe we should vote for him, for Ward Seven, because he's walked in the northern part of Atlanta, and he says, John, you guys need roads out here, you need signs, people are trying to run me over. So that's what we need. We need councilmen and women that care about where they live.
I appreciate the camaraderie. We need more of it in our politics. Mr. Rousseau?
Do I still have to answer my question?
No.
You know what? Unfortunately, cities don't bring people to the cities. It's the people that bring people to the cities. I remember, we moved here 15 years ago, not because my wife went and looked at me and said, oh my gosh, Riverside, let's go. No, it's because my daughter moved over here, she was pregnant, and we had to follow, well, I had to follow my wife. So, and that's why we, that's why we came to Riverside. But the reality is that we need to get the people of Riverside involved, not just the western part, not just downtown Riverside, the whole Riverside, so people can participate and roll their sleeves up and go to work. We have a CERT program where people can get certified for emergency response, as a response team for the community. Get involved in that. When we have a homeless walk, walk the walk, talk to the people, get involved. And as people get involved, that'll bring other people to the cities, and that's when the developers will come over here and the businesses, and that's how we build the city. We built the city from the ground up, not from the office, not for the, I can beg everybody to come to City of Riverside, they're not gonna listen to me. What, four or five neighbors bring those people in, they'll stay there. We got awesome schools, we need to promote our schools. We need to say, listen, uh, we have opportunity here that most cities don't even have, and we need to make it available for the people, but it's not the city itself, it's the people that will bring the people to Riverside and make Riverside, that's definitely the jewel of inland empire.